First thing on the agenda is roll call.
Mayor Manny.
Here.
Brennaman.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Monahan.
Here.
Horn.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
And Jones.
Here.
Actual additions or approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hear no noise? Okay, we have a motion to approve amendments of our previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Discussion? Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, approved bills submitted for.
Motion to approve.
Second. Alright, discussion.
I had one.
Go ahead, because I got a question.
Yeah, I had one question and I think I got an answer. Incorporation was for the chamber area committee, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Do they, with that, you're gonna assume that Rob and I filed everything with the state there? All up and running, ready for to be incorporated on their own for this year then?
Go ahead and answer.
We're officially incorporating, now we're working with Bus CP8 to file for 51C resets with the IRS.
Okay.
So we are a non-public corporation in the state of South Dakota.
Okay.
We do not yet have our tax status.
Okay. Okay.
Any...
Other discussion?
Could you send it?
I'm looking for it, Jerry. I marked him and then apparently I didn't say it.
Alright. Scott?
Could you send me that 51C6, right? Six?
51C3.
Chamber area is filing for 51C3's add.
Is it three, not a six?
So C6 is, so a C3 is a charitable nonprofit, a C6 is...
Okay, okay, oh sorry. Oh, could you send me, when you get a hard copy of that to me? Could I run across meaning that on occasion?
Sure, hopefully next year.
What's the control panel for the camera system?
That sewer camera we've got, it's Gator Cam. It's about, well, right around $10,000 for the whole unit. Computer, the programmer itself, whatever, or the thing that reads it, that's got a DVD player on it with VHS. And it wouldn't record anymore, because it gets cooked also. The new unit always got USB port on it, so we actually put everything under that also. We televised the, all the new lines, and then keep them on records, then, plus if we have an area that we need to check or try to find a wire or something like that, we use the camera to go into sewer lines with it.
So is that the new one, or is that the old one?
Well, with the camera reel itself and the camera, the head, that's the old one. We reused it, the controller actually is modified so it can use our old camera.
Because we talked about that not that long ago, didn't we? About either, I can't remember what the conversation.
About three months ago, we, when it went down on us, we had talked about it, we had it on order, it took about four or five weeks.
So that was the solution, was to get the control panel and use your camera?
Yep, yep, instead of buying everything new, so.
And I've got a new laptop?
Well, it's a desktop, not a laptop, right?
Yeah, that's the new computer. She's been having some issues with hers, it's been running really slow and our IT, said her hard drive was getting close to maxing out. And we already have money still in budget in the finance office for a computer that wasn't used, so we upgraded hers. My plan is at budget time, and I did it for 2018, is to rotate out one computer a year. So they'll put everybody on a seven-year rotation. I just don't, we'll see, it wasn't the last, yeah, which is plenty.
And we got four tires, we got four drive tires on the strip?
Yep, it's the front handle tires, yep.
What was the tire repair from the traffic car?
We had the traffic cars up on Western Avenue, up there by Coffee Cup. And you have to stake them down in a low spot, well, it rained that night or that weekend, and one of the spikes pulled out. Apparently it hit a tire, but a boat trailer got wrecked from it. Oh boy.
Don't we stick them down on the shoulder?
Yeah, but there, the shoulders, it kind of goes like that, then back up again, so you got, you'd have them sticking out about that high, and if somebody catches it...
Okay, got a motion, second, we have further discussion? Okay, none? Call vote, Monahan?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Alright, 706. First public hearing at 705, which is liquor license renewals. She's all that she gives to that county.
Basically, this first hearing is for all the current liquor license holders within the city. Every year, they need to renew them, and it goes from January to December every year. So these would be renewing for January 2018 through the calendar year. Audra has collected all the applications and the payments for that, and it needs to go through our pool first, and then it gets sent to the state.
And this is, kind of pertains to our 710 hearing, but I just want to be sure we're clear on it too. So the one that we're transferring, or may transfer at the 710 hearing, will have to get renewed after the transfer, is that right?
Yeah, so currently, or for this year, Charred had a liquor license when they had, you know, the facility, the south end of town. As you can see, it's not on the list to get renewed, because they're not renewing it. Actually, they're in the process of transferring that to the new owner, which is our next hearing coming up, so. And then, once we get the transfer done, Audra has the paperwork, and we will go ahead and renew that under the new owner's name.
Okay, then it'd be most likely to have a first meeting in assembly?
It'd probably be, yeah.
We hope so, yes. It depends on how fast the state gets it back to us, but yeah.
And when they're going through a transfer, the liquor license is still valid, so, you know, they're able to... They don't suspend service, they're able to serve as long as they're, they're going through the process, you know. They can work under the current license, no matter whose name it's in.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I got it.
Go ahead. Does anybody know what current status of American Legion is?
Well, we believe it's sold, but we don't have confirmation on that yet. I do know a party is working through that, and hopefully in the process of buying it, so.
But, see, because I mean, we're about ready to renew a liquor license for the American Legion, and if the building's sold, and that occupant doesn't want or need it...
Yeah, well, then we lose the liquor license though, if we do that, right?
I think they've been in contact with Audra already to transfer.
To ask questions about transferring it, so I think we're okay, so.
So the finance officer knows more than the entire councilman there.
I just thought I've got to make sure that the sale goes through, yeah. Nothing's official until the sale.
That is true. So if my memory serves me right, we can do these all at one motion, right?
We can, if you'd like.
Perfect. Somebody want to do it?
I'll make a motion to approve liquor licenses as presented.
Second.
Alright, any discussion?
I have some discussion. So, maybe this is directed at Audra. So hypothetically speaking, if somebody buys the American Legion, and they want to transfer the liquor license. We still, I mean, in that event, we still, we don't have to transfer it, correct?
No, they'll still have to go through a hearing, just like our next one, it has to, they'll get approved by the council.
So then if we don't transfer, I mean, well, and even if they don't want a liquor license...
They can just let it drop.
Ultimately, the Legion would have a license without a building, and I assume we could address that too, or not?
Well, liquor license needs to be tied to a location.
To a location.
Yeah, so it wouldn't be, the Legion wouldn't be able to hang on one without having a location.
So if they sell the building, we either transfer it, or we don't transfer it, period?
Right.
Correct, and it just drops, basically.
But we retain it, we retain a liquor license for whoever.
Well, no, because actually, we're one liquor license ahead, according to our population, yeah, so.
So we would lose it if we don't?
We can't double another one out, yeah.
So it would have to be transferred to somebody?
Yeah, in order not to lose it, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. More discussion? Call vote?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Monahan?
Yeah.
Alright, so our 710 hearing, transfer of liquor license RL576 from Charred Restaurant and Lounge LLC to Empire Productions LLC doing business as Blue 42 Sports Grill. Thoughts on that one? I mean, we've kind of talked about that one a little bit here, that's covered in our last hearing a little bit, but...
I'll make a motion to approve the transfer of liquor license.
Horn, second, Monahan, discussion? None?
No, I got a question. Just to clarify, as we went through this transfer before, we actually, the Event Center held the license, allowed Charred to operate under it. Correct.
Charred actually holds the liquor license.
So why are we transferring from the Event Center to...
We're approving it.
Oh, I'm reading wrong.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're approving it, going from Charred to the new owners.
And it's for the whole location, it's not for a half or a section, it's for the whole, whole, both sides.
Is this, is this common practice? Because I honestly can't remember how many times we've transferred that license to the property.
A lot, yeah.
You should, so you think that is common?
To transfer liquor licenses, when the owners take over?
In that short period of time?
Well, this was kind of a unique situation, if you remember, we had, you know, the building was kind of split in half. So the leasing, before Charred, you know, held the liquor license for the entire building, and then they wanted to shrink it down to just their portion of what they're leasing, so they shrunk down the legal description to only include the portion they were leasing, and that freed up the other half of the building, and then after they got new leases in there, they opened up the whole building again, so. Yeah, I mean, that kind of situation isn't normal, usually. Usually it's tired property, the liquor license under tired property, when a new owner buys a property, you transfer the liquor license.
So the license is being transferred to Empire Productions. Is there anybody here from Empire?
Uh, no, Courtney.
Hi, Courtney. Is Empire buying the building, or leasing the building?
Uh, we do buy.
Courtney, if I could, I'm, yeah, could you step forward a little bit? It's kind of our protocol here, just so you know, in case of future reference.
Oh, no, that's just fine, we are buying the property.
So you're buying the building?
Yeah, and we've already signed paperwork, so.
And we're about to transfer a liquor license?
Correct.
So, just help me understand, will that liquor license cover the entire building, or will that just cover...
From what I understood, a liquor license is issued to the property.
It does, the legal description encompass, on the application, encompasses the entire building, yeah.
Because we used to have two addresses.
Well, one was a, like, suite A and a suite B, yes.
Right, and now it's under one.
Now it's under one.
Okay, thank you.
Forgive my confusion, but we've honestly done this so many times.
We wish you good luck.
It's really not funny, because we've done it so many times, so many different ways, that I can't remember how we started and where we're going to end up, so.
Well, hopefully this is the last time you'll have it.
So you guys are buying the building, the liquor license will cover the entire structure of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
Are the, not to, this is relevant to this conversation, really, but, I mean, you say the whole building, you know, obviously, as Teresa alluded to before, the building was split in half. Are you going to be taking control of, in essence, the north side of the building also?
Yes, I am, so it will be doing business as to Cold Plains Event Center. It's all under one big umbrella of Empire Productions.
Okay.
What's your open date on Blue 42, do you have one there? Are you open? Okay.
Tonight is the first day of the trivia, so.
Trivia, trivia. I don't, yeah, I don't perpate, so.
Uh, yeah, don't look at the camera, yeah.
Don't look at the camera.
Am I the only member out there?
And if that's not L?
No.
Alright. This is just retail on Hill Liquor?
This one that they're transferring, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, second.
Yes.
Correct, okay, any more discussion? Monahan?
Yep.
Jones?
Yep.
Brennaman?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
And Nelson?
Yes.
Courtney, welcome to Harvard.
You might as well stay there, the next one's on the other way.
Alright, so, and we're fast, 7:15. Public hearing application for retail on off sale wine license for Empire Productions LLC doing business as Blue 42 Sports Grill.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Go ahead and expand on that just a little bit, what's your, what's your marketing philosophy on that?
I'm, uh...
Oh, no, wine sales.
You know, we're gonna go through our distributors as usual, and I think we're gonna probably target, obviously, more of our winning clientele that's going to be in the Event Center, but, you know, it's it's a sports grill, I can't see us selling a ton of wine, but, you know, as we kind of grow in opportunity, and maybe get a little bit more community action inside, I think that would be a drawing in, so. You know, we don't have a huge selection at this point, but, eventually.
Where does the malt beverage fall under either one of these?
The malt beverage can fall under the retail liquor license, you can sell malt beverages and liquor. This wine license, which is the new one, will allow them to on-sale and off-sale, so if they want, somebody wants to buy a bottle of wine and take it home with them, they can do that under this license, where you can't do that under a retail liquor license.
Alright, any more discussion? Okay, call vote, Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Brennaman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
And Monahan?
Yep.
Yeah, hey, welcome to Harvard.
Thank you. My sixth this time.
Now you can sit down.
Alright, we'll move to reports, first report out, Chief Schumacher, fire department report.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. Seems like it's late in the month already, but I guess, so recapping October, call volume, my partner ran 24 total calls in October, five of those in Hartford. That's putting us on pace for about 270 calls for the year right now, so, fairly busy year overall. Training wise, October EMS, we covered psychiatric emergencies. On the fireside, we train on hose advancement and hydrant operations. We had our business meeting on November 8th, had EMS training last night, covering cardiac emergencies and pediatric patients. On the 29th of this month, fireside will be training on propane and other fuel sources, and dealing with the hazards and emergencies there. Also want to touch base and let, essentially, everybody in our coverage area, we still have a free smoke detector program going on. I believe we're coordinating with the Hartford newsletter, letting the public, letting them have them out, available and free for public usage, and encouraging people who don't have one currently to get in contact with us and get a free one. That's all I have for you this evening.
Brian, is there anything for the minutes for the council and the public you'd like to advise as we move into the winter months in regards to fire hydrant exposure?
Well, and I think we've covered it a little bit ago.
We have.
That is, that is the public's responsibility to clear around their fire hydrants, I don't believe the city offers that service right now. So we encourage not only the property owner, but the neighbors to all get involved in essentially adopting a fire hydrant to keep them clear, looking for about three feet around a hydrant, so we have quick access in that time of need.
We do put that in the newsletter, it'll be in this December one coming.
Yeah, figured as much, I just, give them a double shot.
I think the city council takes care of the one on Patrick, or the city council let us. Just saying, thank you for setting the example. I live to set an example.
Whoa. You go south on that one.
Any other questions for you?
No.
Thanks, Brian.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, chief.
Chamber of Economic Development report, Jesse?
Good evening, how's it going today, I'm Brian in front of you, appreciate your time. In fact, you have a report for the month of October, great month, I think things have been pretty busy since, what, August? Chamber, any new meeting, thank you for those that could attend, make sure that we, hopefully, it's an open meeting, obviously beforehand, so we don't have a problem with any forum issues. We're working on kind of doing some case law bylaws right now, the Chamber of Commerce is updating with some language that is there. Entering update on regional economic development, Slater Barr with the Sioux Falls Development Foundation announced his immediate resignation. I don't know what happened there, but that broke around 5:00 o'clock today.
Say that again.
The president of the Sioux Falls Development Foundation announced his immediate resignation today, and that was to hit the, hit the press around 5:00 o'clock today, so. Don't really know what happened there, but that happened, so. New businesses in town, Blue 42, of course, in Dakota Plains, right? To, shoot, well, they're both Augie, Augie, have an Augie background, so it's a pretty exciting day for Hartford, I think, this season. Out here, so definitely going to be bringing all you folks out here every day, so.
We must be quiet as well, I'll have that one.
Barney and CoCo's is opening, it's a new pet salon opening in the Hartford Plaza, we're opening the ribbon cutting December 4th at 6:30 PM, hope you can make it. And then, we're going to get Chamber mixer on December 14th at the Hartford American Inn, hope you can make that as well, the meds will be going out. The HADC is holding its annual meeting on November 30th, starting at 5:30 PM. The mayor of Sioux Falls, Mike Huthur, will be our keynote speaker, we hope you can make that as well, refreshments and appetizers will be provided. And then, I had a chance to attend training in St. Paul a couple weeks ago, as part of the Mid-American Chamber of Commerce Executives Advocacy Alliance Policy Conference. I received a scholarship to attend that, and I was very fortunate on how chambers can be advocates for their members on a local and state level. Any questions?
Everyone invited to the HADC meeting, like, the whole community, or?
We generally don't invite the whole community, but we don't turn people away.
Got you, okay. Just curious on that.
Are you going to post that one as a meeting?
Yeah.
That's not your fault, by the way.
Okay, just so you know. I have a question. Do you find a way to talk about your alma mater when you're talking about new businesses in town?
Absolutely. I was trying to, I was standing in my office.
The council wants to address in the future, or?
I'm sorry, it's part of the package. Just like in my arguments, I'd catch Hartford nonstop, so it's a two-way street.
I saw it firsthand, yes, he does do that.
How are we doing on our destination brewery on Main Street of Hartford?
Having her back.
Okay.
On the radar.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions for Jesse?
One update, I guess, Northwest Sioux Falls update, there is a new restaurant opening on the corner of, I want to say, Career and 38. It'll be on the south side of Highway 38, The North Star Pub and Grill, same owner as The Recovery Room, he's opening early next year, doing dirt work this fall.
So you know?
Thank you.
Okay. City engineer report?
Starting with Nicholson Road, we have the agreement for the second phase attached, so that's on the agenda here, I thought we'd discuss that quick. In our office, we've just simply been waiting for the, for us to proceed on the second phase of that project. If you guys have the copy of the agreement, it is split into two parts. One part being adding additional fee to do that second phase of the improvements, which is the surfacing of that second phase, and some of the drainage features that go with that. The second part that's listed is what we call letter map amendment, the WOMAR, so it has to do with the floodplains, beams that were moving, that the location of that culvert, and now we have to do an update to the floodplain in that area. So that's the second part of that, of the contract. I did want to point out, there is an application fee with the WOMAR that's around $8,000, if I remember right, that's not included in this, I just wanted to make sure that, because that can be surprising, this.
Alright. We can move into that approval process for that right now, do you have other things you want to give updates on as well?
Yeah, do you want me to go through the rest real quick?
You know what, while we're on that topic, let's stick with that topic on the previous, so.
My only question is, the map doesn't, would be justice to the conversation we had with Mr. Assam regarding the spur to his property?
Oh, yeah, this, it includes that, that portion in there, but you're right, this map doesn't show that. That actually was included in our, the 300 foot was in our initial agreement, we're already under contract for that.
Additional 127 or something to get to his property, so.
Right, yeah.
But this map actually shows more, isn't it, right?
No, this map shows a lot less. Phase one is basically just Nicholson.
Yeah, this is the initial exhibit we had in our first agreement, I think it was why it, that's included in the table. But the, our, we, I can, we are under, our initial contract includes that 300 feet going to there, so we're good there. That was approved with the first phase.
Per, can we watch exact actually go 427 feet, or whatever it is to Mr. Assam's property?
No, that was, that was another 100 feet, I mean, we got it covered under there.
Got it covered, yeah, got it covered. Yeah, this map is dated like 11717, so it was the very first initial.
Yeah, it was.
So this is on top of the previous, how much?
For our, we're currently under contract for 533,254, so that's the first phase, as that exhibit points out, that would have been that first phase and the utilities of the second phase, and probably the listation was included in that. So this contract will include the surfacing of the second phase, and box culvert and those things.
And connecting to Highway 38?
Connecting to that Highway 38, yes.
Everything's cool with the DOT on that angle and all that kind of stuff?
Yep, the DOT is giving us approval on that. We do have to fill out an application permit for, for the access permit, but they, we've met with them several times, and they're supportive of it. We do have to fill out an application permit for the access permit, but we've met with them several times and they're supportive of it.
Okay.
Do we have a motion to approve the engine contract for phase two?
I need a motion to approve the contract of phase two. One second.
Okay, you have a motion and a second, more discussion?
From a legal standpoint, my only concern is as identified and attached illustration. And I'd like to see some wording that reflects an updated illustration through.
Yeah, we can update the illustration there.
I'll say if you can update the illustration before we actually sign this. Maybe, maybe it's a motion to approve it with an updated illustration.
Do you want me to amend it, or do you want me to just tack it on the back?
Another way, if I have to include it.
Okay, so the motion will also include, I'm sorry, give it to me, Mitch.
Updating the illustration as attached.
Dating the illustration, you need to talk close to that mic so I can hear you, man.
Update the illustration.
Yeah, you'll get it.
Yeah.
I'll second that as well.
Okay.
Because you'll get it.
I'm doing that as an amended motion.
That's fine.
Sounds good.
Alright, any other questions?
So does this bring you guys' total to whatever that adds up to? Seven hundred?
Yep.
Surprises, gonna be any surprises?
Are there gonna be any surprises? Loaded question, but.
That's why I asked, it's definitely a loaded question.
You're on trial again, Mitch.
Yeah, we don't anticipate it at this point. We've gotten through a lot of the core, the environmental is usually, you're gonna be surprised, is that probably where it would be. We've gotten, gone forward with our four oh four permit, that's under review with the Corps of Engineers right now. We have gotten some correspondence back from them, kind of trying to push us toward a bridge structure instead of these box culverts. So, you know, that could be one risk that's hanging out there, but we're trying to go back to them and do some alternative analysis to show why we're proposing a box culvert rather than doing a full blown bridge down there. The EPA is involved with that a little bit, but I would say that's probably the only thing that I would say is a risk towards this project that.
Bridge be more?
Yeah, a bridge is more expensive.
Then, and what were those box culverts?
Right now, we've estimated the box culvert's around eight hundred thousand, I think, and the bridge is just short of a million, so. The EPA is, what they're trying to do is, they'll say that, you know, a box culvert probably will, when you look at the fish habitat and wildlife down there, it's less impactful to that habitat. Whereas they look at a box culvert structure that has a bottom, a concrete bottom, is more impactful, so that's where some of those comments come from. So we just gotta go work through that process with them and show them why we chose this alternative and try to get them on board as well.
And we don't have signed agreements? So if we agree to this and the agreements don't get signed, then?
On this, to this agreement? Well, I mean, we are under, we've developed this phase one set of plans for you that has the utilities and streets for the first phase, doesn't have the streets for the second phase.
Plus what we got for the half million dollars?
Right, yeah, so we couldn't go forward with developing new plans. This is really about the rest of the construction documents for this project.
We don't get, we don't get our agreements, we're out eight hundred grand.
If, if something.
Or at least two hundred.
Yeah, if something fell through, I mean, with, with, if something changed where we had to stop this project from the middle of it, I mean, we would, we wouldn't billy for the whole thing. We, you guys have been a long-standing client of ours, I mean, we've, we would, if something awful like that happened, we would terminate this agreement, whatever we're at. I mean, we would ask that we get, you know, our fee for what we have into it. But I guess I wouldn't look at it quite that way, Mark.
If it got shown?
If you're not making that vote, you spend the money.
Okay, that's a legitimate concern. When I look at the money we've dumped into this and we're still not ready to vote.
Right. Yeah, I understand.
At this point, I'm wondering if you made, you know, take on the first half of it.
How long can we push this, Mitch, until we get into trouble?
How long can we push it?
Yeah, as far as with the contracts, with landowners and you guys on the engineering side of it.
Well, I think the agreements are all signed except for stumpies, right? So with that signed, then we have all the right of way and the construction documents that we should need to do the project, so there shouldn't be any hangups to that regard. Stumpies we're still working on, I don't know if you want.
Yeah, and Rose, you know, told you at the last meeting, she just won't sign the agreement if it has that delayed assessment wording in it. We've contacted her attorney and we said, well, if she doesn't sign the agreement, she loses the de-annexation, she loses the crop, you know, payment for credit crop damage or whatnot, so. Now she wants to sign the agreement because she wants all those things, but she still wants that wording out of there. And Larry has told her, well, has told her attorney, Robin, to convey to her, and she has talked with her, she's told us that, you know, we're still gonna delay assess these on the backside then. You know, it may not be in the agreement, we put all the latest, all the assessment language in all the agreements, just so everybody knew upfront what could be attached to their property, they all agreed to it and they signed it. We don't necessarily have to do that, though, we passed that resolution on necessity a few months back that says basically, we're doing this project, we can assess you for your portion of it. And all we need to do is, you know, file that roll with the county. And so we've conveyed to Rose and her attorney that we can take, we can take that wording out of the agreement, but we're still going to, when we do this project, assess you for your portion. And she says, she fully understands that, that those are gonna be a delayed assessment out there against it, but she just doesn't want to sign the agreement saying that she has agreed to that, she'll just have to take it as it comes. It's the same difference, I know it's, it's just in one half a dozen the other. She just doesn't want to sign an agreement that's her name and saying, yeah, she's agreed, so it's assessments. She knows where she's gonna get assessed, she just doesn't want to openly say she agrees to the assessments.
But the land, the land on the corner, that table works done, right?
That's all part of this agreement, and she's agreed she has signed those, that's in the agreement, she'll keep that in there, she'll give us that land on the corner.
But she hasn't signed that yet.
No, she hasn't signed anything yet, and the only thing Larry's doing now, he's rewording the agreement to take that assessment language out of there, and she said she would sign it then.
Where does that agree?
She'd sign the.
Sorry, go ahead, you're right.
She'd sign the, you know, the deed for that corner property, and she'd sign the easement papers, construction easements and everything.
So how far out are we from getting that?
I talked to Larry Dave to get enough, I said, okay, so have you heard anything more? He's open by the first meeting in December, we'll have everything.
So it wouldn't, Mitch, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't break anybody's heart if we pushed this to that being, to get that part of the.
No.
Because without that construction even signed and without that corner land, you're gonna theoretically start doing work.
Right.
Then if we don't have those two wrapped up, then there's no point even going through the motion.
Right, ideally we'd have all the land acquired and in hand before you guys turned us on this.
What?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a substitute motion to table this until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
And.
No discussion, man.
No discussion, man.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Well, let's remember that we did this substitute, because I tried to.
No, hold on, hold on. Nelson?
Okay. I'm gonna amend my motion, by the way.
Well, well, well. We have a substitute motion.
I'm not saying anything.
You can't amend his substitute motion.
No, I was going to amend the motion before he did the substitute, that's what I was trying to say. Okay, so the question is to make the substitute motion to table it till the next meeting, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Keel?
Yes.
Friend?
Yeah.
Sean?
Yes.
And mine?
Yeah.
Okay, while we're on that topic, where does that agreement with Rose leave us with the de-annex plan?
So in the agreement, which she'll sign if we take out that assessment language, says that we will de-annex that portion, of course, she still wants that.
So we're still on that train? Alright, just making sure that we're all, everybody's understanding.
So we're still de-annexing that portion that's already in the city, so all of her assessments will be delayed, there won't be any drafts, so everything's delayed. We are getting that corner piece for the curb that we need to dip down, she's deeding that to us. And the other main part basically is in there that we have language in there about crop damage that she wanted added for her farm or that any crop damage we deal with.
Okay.
Her farm would be compensated for, so.
And all the easements.
And yes, and all the easements, well, construction easements, temporary easements is in there, so those are the main parts of her agreement.
I think that's how we probably use the substitute motion, right?
Yeah, that'd work.
Alright.
Yeah. And then I'll give you, you'll just want to update that.
We'll take the exhibit in the meantime, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any reason why it's having to work, it's just the way it would.
Yeah, I'd just say, you know, the longer, the longer, the longer we have to wait, it just pushes the bid out further. I think right now we're probably looking at a March bid for us to start it, but.
Alright. Updates?
Reports or old bits?
So in the first part, we have to come back to Mitch and send the gift.
Yep.
Yep.
So we'll move on to the rest of your report.
Okay.
Thanks, Mitch.
Mike Franken Trail, we had a substantial final inspection, so what we've done is generated a punch list of items that the contractor needs to finish up on. The school attended that meeting, so they got a chance to walk through with us. So we got a list of items to the contractor for them to work on over the next few weeks, and then once those are done, we'll be working with the state to issue a final payment to them and getting that job closed out, so.
I'm depthless, what?
They had, we had some, the sign out there, the wealth of sign had some settlement on it. If you go out there, it's the bricks that's up against it, it's settled on it, so we're asking them to repair that. I don't think they hit it, I think it's just that sock on there that the movement of the ground just shifted it. And so that's on there, that's probably the most significant item on there, I'd say.
They didn't have photos of the pre-construction that showed that?
We did, yeah.
They're gonna get something fixed.
Well, yeah, I mean.
Much more.
It's one or more than two inches, so. It was settled before, yeah, it settled some more and to me, we're, I mean, it settled because of their project.
Absolutely.
The school, they had some areas that they wanted to see touched up just grading wise, so we'll have some of those items on there, and a couple culverts that have to get cleaned out, nothing real major, I'd say.
Does anybody know what the school, did that school put a drain tile or what they do in there?
Irrigation.
Irrigation.
For soccer view.
On the force account side, we had plan reviews for Western Oaks State, we're pre-labor plans, engineering, some minnows and a couple flats that they've been doing over there. That includes kind of the jam addition flat that's listed. Been working on updating the subdivision regulations, attended a meeting on planning and zoning, and kind of went through a proposed regulation with them and Teresa. And then just helping pull in some estimates for the sports complex and helping with some of the planning out there.
Alright, questions for Mitch?
Thank you.
Okay, Paul, first?
I'll just kind of hit it quick on this here, we're basically working on the gravel roads, we'll probably hit them a few more times yet until we get them either to froze hard enough where we can't touch them or we have snow on them. Been trimming some trees, we still got a few more to do, we've just kind of been hitting some of them that are hanging over the, out the street that we're gonna be hitting with the trucks and that, or the plow. The issues on South Main where the gas company heaved up the pavement over there, that has been taken care of and fixed. Sherwood, I'm not sure if that's been fixed, I wasn't up there today, but it was last week, it wasn't done yet, so. Both Sherwood is aware of it, Sue Bailey was aware of it, and also the contract did the work, so it's between them to get it taken care of and fixed, so. Boom Truck, we brought that into inland here to get some work done on that, get that back so we can get the tree in Century Square decorated. Jesse finished up sweeping the streets, we got them all down, done the east ones, the curb, or at least the curb lines off, every one of them. That's been hosed out good and washed up and put away. Otherwise, working on Christmas decorations, getting to get those put up, I see they actually did put some up here the other day, so, Monday. Water and sewer finally are able to discharge, we're discharging both number two and number three, everything looks really good on it, so we should be able, should be in compliance with everything, so I'm not too worried about it, but.
Can you attribute that to Craig as far as, I mean, you know, it's kind of a little bit of an ongoing thing this year?
It constantly is, it's weather.
I mean, I know it's weather, I mean, and stuff, it just seemed to go a little longer this year, I mean, I mean.
Yeah, it, it's all, I mean, we've had it the years the same way, it just with, with number three actually, it was, they're so clean to begin with that you got the L G B. And the pH was too high, we discharged all, the weather switched around, it gets cooled down a little bit, pH is right where we want to be with it, and the P S S in number three is just, it's a little bit over the thirty day average count. That's why I'm blending it with two, because number two's crystal clear, so we'll, I don't have any doubt that we'll be compliant with it all.
Good job.
And as soon as we get this moved out and done, we are going to be trying to get number one discharged, so. Metal Construction, they've, and now all the contractors over the last few years have been having a hard time getting these water mains to pass. The first one seems like it always passes, and, but we're one of the few towns that make them do two consecutive that have to both pass, because I've seen that first one pass so many times and the second one failed. Sioux Falls is just getting, they're just doing one sample, letting them go. Anyway, so they took first sample pass, second one failed, they re-florinated, first one passed, second one failed. And I finally talked to Bob Sherwood and said, you need to run this up about a hundred and fifty, two hundred parts per million, you're not gonna get to do with that. So we finally did that, and both samples passed, so. So that is online, so all the hydrants up there are online, ready to work, and we're working something like that. Like I said, these are not the first one, we have had issues with rung e construction when they did that, or there on, for Crestwood or Castello's when they did that, so it's pretty common. We had the same thing, we put that little short median ourselves out a couple years ago, so. Parker Pool, like I said, we're gonna be getting this tree decorated, ready for, working on and getting ready for hometown Christmas, we'll be working on that next week, getting that ready to go, and that's all I have to say.
Any more consideration to putting a light on the Sioux Falls?
It's ordered, I told them I wanted it done before the meeting tonight, it didn't get done, so. It's ordered and everything like that, just waiting for them to get it put up, so. Any other questions?
Who are responsible for trimming the trees in the boulevard?
Well, it's been something that we've done, we're gonna probably look at addressing them differently, maybe where we take care of the trees that we, the trees that we plant, the new ones that we plant, maybe taking care of them for like three years, four years, or been letting homeowner be responsible after that, so. It's been a policy for years that we've taken care of Boulevard trees.
What about areas that don't have sidewalks?
If it's in the right of way, we still take care of them.
If it's hanging into the road?
If it's hanging in the road and it's not in there, if it's actually the homeowner's tree, we'll inform them that they have to get it trimmed up, because if we go in and touch it, basically we're touching a private tree, so.
More questions? Thanks, Craig. Alright, and I'll go with the finance officer report.
Okay, so in my report, I get what the totals in for through October thirty-first. You'll kind of notice the first, second, and third penny, it looks like we have a huge increase there, but if you look at the year to date, last year, we only got, we typically get about two payments a month, as I've said in the past, it just kind of depends on when it hits. I know that last October, only one payment hit, and the other one hit like November first, second, so that's why it seems like it's a lot smaller. And actually, this October, we had September's hit right at the beginning of October. And actually, this October, we had September's hit right at the beginning of October, so we had three payments, so. Just make sure you look at the, the running total, because that'll give you a better idea of where we're at towards the year. And then I also included all of the committee funds, and then I also highlighted some of the, out of the ordinary bills in that bill report section in the middle. If you don't already know, we have scheduled a Christmas party for the city. The invitations went out today, so you should be receiving those and you can get those, if you get a RSVP to us by the 5th. I am continuing to work on the website, I'm making sure, one of the new things I'm doing is making sure that the news and announcements and public notices is up to date on the front page, so I don't know if you've noticed that or not. Whenever a public notice is posted to the newspaper now, if I do it, I put it on there, or if Teresa is doing it, she emails it to me and then I can actually schedule it to go on the same day that it's in publication, so then we can keep those up to date. And as far as news is concerned, I'm just kind of working with, you know, the outdoor staff and staff internally as well to kind of come up with ideas to make sure that things are up to date there and that people know what's going on. So I want to make sure it's as current as possible, so. Let's see, and then I also included a calendar of events coming up. As you know, with Thanksgiving, we will be closed on both Thursday and Friday this week, so, any questions?
Good job on the website, I think the website's really good. Been looking nice.
Thanks.
Our entry, so it's city administrator's report. Thanks, Audrey.
Just a couple things I'm gonna be working on for the end of the year. I'm still working on updating the census information, we're going through address updates on the entire US, so I have to go through all of our addresses within our city and get that update for the Census Bureau. I'm also gonna be looking at our 2017 budget, now that we're approaching the end of the year, see where we're sitting. We may need to do some transfer of funds from our contingency account to other accounts that we may be running short on in possibility of supplemental appropriation to transfer some funds around, so we're squared up at the end of the year. That'll come before you at the next meeting in December. Mention we, with P&amp;Z, we're working now on updating our subdivision regulations, so we'll be working with the P&amp;Z board. It'll take a few more months, but once, you know, we go through it with them and they're comfortable with the new updates then it'll come before the city council for you guys to review and discuss. One thing, in next year's budget 2018, we budgeted to increase our patrol hours. As you recall, right now, we're getting 40 hours of random patrols, that's nights and weekends, and that's on top of Chancy, our daytime cop. And we budgeted actually for 60 hours to increase that. I did contact the Sheriff's Department last week and I actually just today, Sheriff Milstead called me back and said that this is something we want to move forward with. He believes he'll have the staff and he can work with us to increase our hours for that, so. I just, basically one I get is insurance from you guys, because what they'll do is they'll send out a new contract for next year that we'll have to approve next month, and so they'll redo the contract and increase our hours from 40 to 60, so are we all comfortable with?
Does it mean the budget number?
Yeah, we put it in budget for the 60, so yes.
I just want to make sure you didn't escalate anything that passed out.
Yeah, so I just wanted to make sure nothing changed.
I, I guess if I'm gonna be on board, I'd like to know when those hours are, because I don't think we need 20 more hours between midnight and 4:00.
And I did talk about him a little bit with that, it says right in our contract and all our previous contracts, we can't designate. It goes off, he'll try to accommodate as much as we can, and he indicated that, he's done that in the past too, for the hours we have, but it's all gonna be on their staffing and when they have their shift changes and if they have an emergency in one part of the county at one time versus another. So it does say in the contract and all the previous ones that, you know, when those hours are at the discretion of the Sheriff's Department, we can't say, we need somebody here from 8:00 to 9:00 or whatever.
I get that if they get a call, you know, they can't be here, but, I mean, honestly, if we're getting another 20 hours in the dead of the night, that's not gonna have the effect of what the additional 20 hours is designed to have.
Yeah.
The additional hours needs to be between 4:30 and 9:00 or.
Yeah, and, and he won't write that into a contract, contractor guarantees certain hours because he just can't predict that. But he has, and he's done in the past, when we've requested, you know, we need more patrols this hour. School is kind of one of our big things, you know, between the 4:00 and 6:00 o'clock time, we had issues in there and they did try to send as many extra patrols as they could during that time.
Is that a year-long contract?
Yeah, it runs from January to December, so.
Is there any way we can do a six-month contract to see if it works?
We can try, I doubt they would because they take what, you know, that, that works into their county budget, you know, and their county budget runs year to year, so, I mean, I can ask, but I would rather doubt they would. They do yearly contracts with everybody because that's the number they work off for their.
So that'd be a hundred hours a week?
Well, it'd be 60 of the random and then 40 of Chancy.
So that'd be a hundred hours a week?
Yeah. So before, like I said, they're gonna redo the contract. And I can talk to them some more, I don't know if there's anything we can change with 40, no one.
When do we, so if they're gonna redo that contract, we'd see that in December?
Yeah, hoping by our first meeting in December, they'll get a new contract out of it.
And if we. If we have anything we don't like about that one in the first meeting in December, we can still send it back at that point? It's just pushing it to that point, right?
Yeah. I mean, we'll sell our second meeting in December to give, but they need it by the, by January 1st.
Do you see the log when they're out here?
Do I see what?
Do you see the log of when they're out here? We used to get it, but we don't get it anymore.
Yeah, yeah, and they still send that, we just can't, we just can't because of the Marcy laws.
Yeah.
Just go to the bottom, boy, that's where it usually was at.
We still get a log saying how many hours they have, but not when those hours are.
So your log, your log doesn't show when they're here?
No, it won't show they're here, you know, on a Tuesday.
Just what the deputy was and how many hours they were in.
Exactly, this deputy had this many hours in Hartford, this deputy had this many hours.
And you have no idea when it was?
Yeah, and we don't get the log anymore of where they go, yeah, we don't get that anymore because of the Marcy law. We used to get a log of where they go, but. So I mean, I, I will talk with Milstead some more and ask about, you know, I'll address that, you know, we don't want those 20 hours to be like instead of the dead of the night, or, you know, we want to be more active and I'm sure he'll try to, he'll just tell me what we'll try to do as far as staff and what we can, but, but I will discuss it some more with him. So. The other thing I have in my report is just to let you know, end of year is coming, so we will be doing employee evaluations, so if you have any input, comments, thoughts on that, please let us know, you know, me and Craig, staff here, Jeremy will be doing ours, so you know, get your, like I said, your comments or your input for that to us. I have a couple other things that I did have on my report that I just wanted to update you on. Yesterday, with the completion of the bike trail and the connective path, we did get that $10,000 Wellmark grant with that. I submitted the final report with that, so we satisfied all the requirements for that grant, they're good with that. I told them I will let them know when we have a ribbon cutting because I want to be out here too for that, so hopefully in spring they'll show up for that. And then, we had mentioned, you guys know, we had our water tower inspected two months ago. We got the inspection report this last week, Craig and I both looked it over, we actually came out very good, it's in pretty good shape, you know, they didn't have any, you know, negative comments on it, it's holding up really well, you know, they did a cleaning with it. They suggested, you know, every two and three years to do it again, they said possibly in those three years, we may need to do something with the painting of it, but otherwise, all in all, everything looks pretty good on it, so I think we're in pretty good shape with our water tower. That's all I had.
Questions for Teresa? Alright, hey Teresa? Alright, so we've got visitors, we've got a Girl Scout troop, 50087 Silver Award Project Proposal. And Larson's are here, his scouts are here. So anybody who needs to speak, we just want to make sure that you're speaking from the podium and that Audrey hits your name for a minute.
I'm just gonna say that the troop was here, since there's a large group.
Several groups?
So, yep, so that's fine, thank you.
I'm not the girl scout, I'm just the leader.
What badges will they earn for this?
Badges, it's a silver award.
Silver award?
Yes.
It just goes right to silver.
Well, before we begin the presentation, we would like to pass out.
Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, he can't hear as well, so he has a hearing aid piece, and so these microphones will pick up, so you'll need to make sure you're at the point you can speak up.
But you're in speech in high school right now.
Thank you.
I'm grading you right now.
Mr. Wallace, well, before this presentation begins, we would like to hand out doggy poo pigs from the thing we like to do.
Awesome, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
They're not really sentient, I, I don't know, we, that's possible. Well, this is the Girl Scout troop 50087. This, the troop members consist of Alexa, Josephine, Morgan, me, Rachel, and Autumn. We're second-year level cadet Girl Scouts. We are recipients, okay, if I can do that right, of the 2015 Broad War. We are currently working toward our Silver Award, we have three dogs owners and two still begging their parents. We are a mix of Western Fleet Trojans and Tri-Allen West Ages. Our proposal is to add five pet waste stations along the Hartford-Bacon Mark Trail system. Two of our locations have trash cans at the moment, and those would be by Turtle Creek Park and the new trail by the high school. Our other three locations, we recommend adding trash cans at and we'd also add the waste stations. Those are the Colton Road Trail north, the intersection of Colton Road and Highway 38, and the Michael Fitzmore's Trail close to Hartford Heights. We recommend starting with fewer stations at first and review to see if more are needed. We ask that the City of Hartford help provide maintenance and installation of the stations.
Okay, our project timeline, from August to November, we're planning our project. November, we're trying to get our project approved. In December through February, we're gonna raise money. March, we're gonna start ordering. April, we're gonna install, and May, we're gonna do a ribbon and a community awareness event.
So for this project, we'll be meeting these community needs by keeping our community clean, eliminating pollution, controlling diseases, maintaining waste drainage rates, and building pet owner awarenesses. A fun fact is that approximately 44% of all households in the United States have dogs.
There are some comments from Hartford citizens. There is waste everywhere, it is unsanitary, it is inconsiderate, and kids are playing in some of these areas.
Our poo pollution not to ignore. EPA deemed dog waste a nonforensic source of pollution in 1991, putting dog waste in the same category as oil and toxic chemicals. Polluted dog waste is a native ingredient contaminant of the water supply. Dog waste adder, average dog can produce 274 pounds of waste per year. Spread of diseases, it can spread to other dogs, children, and adults. It causes exclusive bleed and algae growth and severe illnesses in humans.
Roundworms are parasites that only survive by eating partially digested food. They live freely in the intestines of a living animal. They're most commonly found with different types of newer feces or poop. They're always the same thing with synonyms. Roundworms remain infectious in dog waste for years. Recent studies show that 14 of the United States population is or will be plagued with roundworm over the course of one year.
So part of our project is also building awareness for pet owners. We plan to do this by hosting events on the trails, partner with other community pet-related events, and put signs on the pet waste stations to tell more about it. So that's just a list of the recommended places for the stations for the next.
Seeking donations toward the project. So the total cost would be approximately $1,600, and to get that, each station is approximately $200. We will supply it with bags to restore, resupply stations and the price of $500. And the incentive is approximately $75.
In conclusion, we'd like to mention that this project is endorsed by the Hartford Bacon Retract Committee. And Mr. Troy Larson would like to say something.
Of course she would.
Hi, Troy Larson, Chair of the Hartford Area Bike and Rep Trails Committee, and that's the first time my daughter's ever referred to me as mister. I kind of like it, I wish it worked that way all the time. The Bike and Rep Trail Committee has provided their enthusiastic endorsement for this project. This is an issue that actually has been brought to our attention. A handful of us have received complaints from people that use the bike path, asking if there's any kind of public awareness campaign that we could start, so we were actually as a committee talking about this, and the Girl Scouts took it upon themselves to take the initiative and get this project going. It's my understanding they're gonna raise all the money so it'll be no cost to the city. It would just be a matter of the city staff installing and then refilling the bags as needed. My understanding there's gonna be quite the supply of replacement bags, so very minimal impact to the city and we really think it'd be a very worthwhile project to hopefully clean up the path a bit. But we also want to thank the current city leaders, past city leaders, Teresa, everyone that's been involved. The bike path is just, the whole system has just been an amazing addition to our community and we look forward to having a dedication and ribbon cutting this spring for the Mike Franken Trail. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Are there any questions?
So the maintenance of the poo bags, you're asking me to make sure that it will be done by our city staff, okay? And, and there will be ample supply of bags through the Europe Girl Scouts, if I understand that correctly? And is there, is there any idea how long that supply might last?
Not at the moment, considering we don't have any past study.
I'm reading lips right now. I'm getting pretty good at it.
Considering we haven't had any former experience with dog waste stations, we don't quite know at the moment, but we have asked some of the people for the dog parks in Sioux Falls and they haven't got back to us yet, but once they do, we'd be glad to share that with you.
Will you be doing any secondary patrol, for lack of a better term, for those residents with dogs walking on the bike trail? Maybe, you know, kind of like in-the-ditch cleanup type scenario? Maybe, you know, kinda like in-the-ditch cleanup type scenario, where you might just kinda KP the joint, for lack of a better term, or the path, just to reassure that, you know, it's being done thoroughly? Probably haven't discussed that, but I'm asking the question.
We haven't discussed that much, but some of the Girl Scouts do live by the bike trails. They can probably, we can probably take walks by it, and then if there's leftovers, we might just take it upon the duty ourselves.
Good one.
That's funny.
So, duty, just to pick, you know, up the dog duty, and then put that in the trash cans nearby.
Gotcha. Craig, last question I have, have you seen any issues with this as far as the city staff goes? I think it's great of you.
I have one question. Any one of you, please feel free to answer. North Colton proposed waste station in Hartford Heights, closest to the housing development. Well, it'd actually be the furthest one, yeah, there's only one. What is the closest residential structure in relationship to those two stations? Because you know what's gonna happen. If there's a complaint, you know what the complaint's gonna be. And if you've got a poop garbage can too close to my house. So do you girls know what that distance is?
I hope it's close to your house, Rachel.
Well, I don't know.
I think, I think most of her stations were away from houses, and that one would be located by her house.
Yeah.
So if you complain, you're dead.
So the, so the one on North Colton Road's not incredibly near, because I can't think of what's up there.
No, I don't think it's really near.
You don't think it's gonna be?
I'm a hell of a Girl Scout. I'm a filthy sister.
And that is one of the problem areas that's been brought up, and the Lorraine's do live there, so they recommended that addition, and that's right there by their property.
My dog keeps stepping in dog poop.
Yeah.
It's not funny.
I think you'd wanna put that one down there by that drainage area through there, so it's actually not, you know, be between the two property orders there, there's that-
Like Espinoza's?
Yeah, if you slide it down, you know, there is a drainage area through there, there's culverts in there and stuff, and that would be like halfway between the two lots there, so it wouldn't really be on somebody's backyard or their lot, for say.
I made a motion to endorse the Silver Award Project for Girl Scout troop number 50087.
Motion in second. Question, discussion?
I wanna see the big finish I seen you practicing the other night.
Should we get up there?
You gotta see this. I see him doing it. Okay, let's see the big finish.
Doggy.
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 Doggy, doggy.
Poo problem!
They're in harmony, too.
Yeah, good job.
In harmony.
All right, we got a motion in the second?
One question. I'm sure, I'm sure this is just a, I'm sure this picture is just some stock photo, but it's a little graphic, but what I did notice is this appears to be from the United Kingdom. Because of the UK property in there, this, you think this problem is this, that's horrible? Do you think it's that bad here in the United States? It's one of the newspaper. One with the newspaper and the-
It's a good graphic, I will say.
The images were great.
Well, we didn't use, we didn't use, but we did have some pictures of poo in different areas of the yard. Well, we already had things that, by, we got that.
So you have some actual Hartford poo pictures.
Yeah.
Would you like to show them?
We don't need to see it. Just wanted to ask the question.
Go outside Rachel's house and see a lot of it.
All right, we'll flip all the votes, make them official. Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
Keel?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yeah.
Jones?
Yes.
Good job, ladies.
Thanks, you guys.
Oh, and do you need us to collect the poo bag for you, or do you want anyone to care?
We're giving it to Craig, so he has it.
Thank you, Craig, for taking care of that.
Thank you.
They will be.
Move on to whole business. On whole business, we had to discuss sports complex land. Got a couple different items that I'm covering here. I talked to Monahan, as, puts my ideas together on, on who can work up there, I wanna have a little bit of discussion about that. I do also want to have some discussion about appointments for this Swenson land addition proposal team. Like to, we'll jump into that a little bit later, I wanna get Keel and Jones appointed to that. We have a meeting coming up next week, Wednesday, which is the 29th, at 3:30 at Stockwell. One of the meetings we had last month, but just talk about usage and some of those kind of things, so. Probably other items under this gen item, but with that, I'll probably just turn it over to Mark to do a little bit of a background and similar numbers and talk about that.
Well, after our last meeting, I believe it was the day following, I talked to Nick Horn, and I guess what came out well, and then after I talked to Nick, I talked to everyone here individually. And at the very least, when we come out of here tonight, I think we need to have a construction plan for 2018 for some fashion for the sports complex. I asked Teresa to get some really rudimentary numbers from Stockwell's for grading, seeding, water, electric, and sewer. The rough number, grand total for that entire project was one point six two four million dollars. Was a little bit startling due to the sewer. The sewer alone was a million dollars. So, right from the get-go, I think I texted Nick and told him that that million-dollar sewer was probably more than, than I'd be willing to buy it off of, but that leaves six twenty-four for water, electric, grading, and seeding. And that, that is not what, that's not irrigation on water and dirtwork. So then, recently, and I talked to Jeremy about this today, and maybe you can fill in the blanks Mitch. If we, if we go into this open minded, and we're thinking water and electric, where do you, where do you run that to?
Well, that was kind of my question, I guess, when we were asked to put those costs together. And the electric we have there is just to get it to the general vicinity of where the public maintenance building would be.
Yeah.
But you know, what you're trying to, that was kind of unknown to me, I guess, exactly where, where they take that. And the water, you know, the estimate we provided was actually for irrigation, that was, I think, four hundred thousand to irrigate the two ball fields that are out there, and the three soccer fields that are out there. So I'm not sure, the water, no irrigation, what that, is that water cannons, is that kind of?
Well, you know, it's, it's just, it's just a number, and that's what, that's what got me thinking, because I don't, I don't know where you ultimately take that water. In my mind, you take it to the concession stand.
Yeah.
In my mind, but, you know, how far that is away, I don't know, so, I mean, that's part of the plan, they can change as well, so.
I guess in my mind, I don't see why you bring water and sewer into the park unless you were gonna do a concession stand or something like that, you're committed to a concession stand.
At what point do we stop making surface improvements without infrastructure improvements?
Right. And I think, this is just my thought, I think, I thought that what would drive the sewer through there would be the industrial development to the north there. You know, a lot of facilities like this, you can still do portable units out there, laboratories. You know, so without a concession building or a restroom building or some, something like that that you're committed to, I don't know why you bring water and sewer in here.
So I guess, more- I just wanted to ask one thing about water here, because it, you know, it has this, this Swenson proposal team, just talked, just a lot of layout and usage and some of those kind of things. One of the things about grading and seeding is, is irrigation, whether it's water cannons, whether it's, you know, one of the things that came up is, hey, what, let's look into what's the cost of digging a well, so that, so we don't have to use city water to irrigate something like that?
No water there. We drilled, we drilled all the wells around here for test holes for the city.
I remember that now.
And so I wonder if there's not a, a good idea to at least get water up to an edge of it, where you can have a hydrant of some sort? If you did decide to do water cannons or something like that, or, it might not be to a building, but just so you have the ability of shooting water out there if you need it.
Could we run a tap off the, off the real water in the ditch?
That's our line.
That's your line, yes. I mean, you have-
It's already got a line stuffed out.
So it's already there.
It's already there.
Water's already on western, yeah.
I mean, if you really want to-
Is it on western, or is it on the oil?
It's on.
On the north?
It's on western, on the east side of the road there.
Is it?
Turns a corner.
There's hydrants along that whole little area that go-
Is there hydrants there?
Long western, then they turn, but there's also hydrants going there.
So if they're looking at can and irrigation, I mean, you just have to invest, somebody'd have to invest in hose and a can, get the hydrants there. So.
That would be terribly expensive to get into that.
I, I think if you're gonna do that, I would look at almost getting some inexpensive pipe, and whether you buried it two foot down or whatever, and just threw a bunch of pipe in and have yourself some points out there that you could put, hook up to instead of trying to run two thousand feet of hose around it, because, you know, the fire department, you start logging hoses around, that's a lot of work.
Audrey, that's kind of where I'm looking at it, is I would rather see us do the grading, seeding, and water irrigation.
Did the school district just put about thirty thousand dollar irrigation system in for the soccer field?
We're in the process of running it, I don't know what cost.
About thirty thousand, I think, was it? Yep, so all that, you know, all that digging around out there, it was thirty thousand dollars for the irrigation for one soccer field.
Well, you know, there's, there's a lot of questions to be answered that ultimately we don't have the answer to, but I, I think, I feel confident that we can leave this meeting tonight with a motion to move forward with at least knocking down the rest of that site and seeding that site. And I can't remember how many people I told, but honestly, you know, looking back on it, we should've did it, we should've did it years ago, because it would've been cheaper, and it would, just would've been done. But ultimately, I'm sure that decision was made because that was another three hundred fifty thousand dollars that we didn't want to spend five years ago. You know? So we kicked a can down the road today, and I just can do it next year instead of kicking the can further down the road, so.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Sure.
Can we put, can we put a septic in there?
I was curious, holding tank, would that be a smart idea or a bad idea?
I mean, because if you quit using it, you can just fill it in.
Until there's water and sewer out there, I mean, until there's sewer out there, that's would be the way to go.
Because I keep going back to what you've heard at these discussions, we want to move this thing to the next level, we want to run tournaments and stuff out there, and ultimately, we gotta have bathrooms with running water and a concession stand.
Well, how much is the-
That's back to what you just said, I mean, at some point, we're gonna have to suck it up and do the infrastructure. So if the sewer is a million, but we can do a septic system for
Way less.
Hundred thousand, less, fifty thousand?
I think, I think what you'd wanna do is don't do a, like a septic with drain field.
Drain field.
I would just, I would look at-
Just do a holding tank and pump it out.
And have a sensor on it, something for monitoring it, and-
I mean, that's what Central State has, right?
And then just pump it out, and you'll only be probably pumping it once or twice a year.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Because that's a, that's an infrastructure stack, step that gets these guys closer to what they have said that they want to be able to do. Right?
But ultimately, if, if the electric is relatively cheap to get it to the, I mean, really, the electric's relatively cheap compared to everything up there. Water's in the ditch in a hydrant, and if we can put in a septic tank to solve that problem, if we get the rest of that land knocked down and get it seeded.
Grated and seeded?
And, I mean, that'd be taking a big bite out of it, and then address if, if we wanna go down the road for irrigation, whether that's a cannon, or whether that's having city staff bury line to put in, to put in heads, you know, to facilitate a shorter hose in a cannon. You know, and to get, you know, I, if I recall, Stockwell Engineering concession stand was probably F5 tornado rated, if I recall. I don't know whether Hartford needs that, you know, when you can buy a hot dog and a bag of chips out of, you know, old chicken coop. You know, ultimately, so I don't, I don't know that we need to touch all of concession stands, but, you know, that, that's a conversation that can happen, you know, later on too. But ultimately, if we don't get the land knocked down, and we don't get it seeded, and we don't get the grass growing, then this is all mute conversation.
Mark, you talked, I started some one thing.
Just to- That, well, let me, Mark must know about the money, and I think the sports complex is sitting on one twenty.
Mm-hmm, twenty thousand, yeah.
And honestly, I would, I wouldn't want to use that money. I think we, I think we get the number together, I think we put it out for bid, and I think we do that project next year, and we let them sit on that one twenty. I think, I think we bond, borrow, or however, whatever it costs to do the, to do the grading and seeding, and whether that's a five-year note, I think we can get the terms low enough that it, that it's reasonable. Just do that aspect of it, let them keep the one twenty for the cannon or for a concession. I think you should be able to build an incredibly nice concession stand with a tank, you know, if the city picks up the water. You know, I, I think that's all, we're not gonna solve those problems tonight, but I guess what I'm saying is, I wouldn't want to tap into that one twenty. Because if we tap into that one twenty and come up with the rest to do the seeding and grading, then they're just gonna grow, and then we're not doing, then they're not doing anything else.
See, I think if the, if we record with something like that tonight, where the city council got the backend grading, seeding, and getting everything level out there, so we've got places to use, right? I think that, that team that's getting together now every month, so it's like the whole team, can start getting the details together, whether, hey, next step is concession stand. Next step is use, how do we wanna lay out fields, how do we wanna lay out things? I think some of the details can be worked out there, but I think this would be a really positive next step to know that the council's committed to it.
Well, I'll just note that, I mean, you, you look at these numbers, your sanitary sewer is a million dollars. One point six million total, if, if we did that today, I'd have a pretty hard time not using that hundred and twenty that's in, in the account, you know? But if we lower that, then do the sanitary and sewer, and we talked about maybe doing just a, just a tank later on, that lowers that to three quarters of a million dollars. It's a pretty substantial saving, and like you said, it doesn't put them in a hole of any sort. We can do it on bond or a note of some sort with low interest for five, maybe ten years. It saves a million dollars, I mean, I think that's huge. And then grading and seeding, to get it set up, and like you said, it's not kicking a can down any further down the road. We're getting done, and it's, so, ready to go, and we're just gonna add to it.
If the water's already there, why is it so hard?
That was-
That means water? I don't know what that's hundred and forty-four thousand is, what's-
Email.
Is that?
From your email.
Hundred and forty dollars. Mitch, you had sales, now you just pull numbers out of here?
I didn't recognize it.
Is that an F5 water system? Is that an F five water system?
Well, I didn't see it.
I'm gonna use that type.
You're an engineer, what do we give?
Twenty four thousand in water. Is that gold plated?
Those are those really rough numbers.
I thought, what I remember sending was irrigation number, and I thought it was much more than that. Because with the irrigation out there, I mean. We got, we, I know we included a pump out there because the water pressures are low on that side of the land. So there's, and then we had to put some man then to get there, so it kind of hit, it's a more significant irrigation system.
So our water pressure coming off of our water line in the ditch is low, too too low to irrigate. Too low to irrigate from. The water pressure coming to us from anyhow our real water in that ditch is too low to effectively irrigate from, you know?
It's not too low, but we probably need to boost the pressure.
Sure.
It's, I mean, it's probably in the range of forty to fifty.
It's not, it's not designed for irrigation.
Yeah, and that's why in our irrigation numbers, we have booster pump built into there because we had to. Boost the pressure.
Taking the four hundred thousand to irrigate the two softball fields in the soccer field, then I called the bank and said, what, to not irrigate, just to get water. You said take off this much, the two takes by three, that's where the one point four seven comes from.
So that's just bringing stubborn water in and getting mains in there, basically. That was probably to get two so you could put up a water can.
Yeah, that's just bringing in the line.
Ultimately, and and honestly. We have three representatives. And I really.
They're not even in the soccer. Who 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 here is actually from the sports committee?
Matt.
You Matt, you are. Got one, I want to make an observation. Can I just make one observation since you brought that up?
In a minute.
Give you a minute.
We have three concerned citizens here. And and what. I I would rather see this council invest in what we have. Then. Have to go to a special election that's gonna cost money. And. Who knows how that's gonna turn out? But if it turns out that the people of this town want a sixty five acre sports complex. Then I don't want to shift gears. And try to build a sixty five acre sports complex and go looking for more land for industrial. Because. Because ultimately, that would be the end result. It it wouldn't be sixty five acres sports complex and that's the only road we're going down. The next gear we would go down, or the next road we would go down is, so now we gotta go looking for more land. So I would rather just invest in what we have and work together. Instead of. Try to, try to figure out a sixty five acre sports complex and go looking for more land, because that, that land in the future is gonna be. We bought that for what, Teresa, eight or six acres?
Um, eight, wasn't it?
Eight thousand acre, and you you can about imagine any land around here now, that was eight thousand dollars, seven years ago. So if if we go down that, we're gonna be looking at twelve thousand dollars an acre or more, you know, for twenty, that's, how much money is that in there?
Five thousand. Find that quarter for fifteen thousand an acre.
Yeah, so I, you know, I I don't want to go down that road. But. I I would rather invest in what we have, and like I said, you know, we should have done it years ago, and we probably wouldn't even be having this conversation. But we didn't do it years ago, so now we are. And like Nick said, you know. It's been wrong, it's been wrong since the beginning. And I agree with you. It's. But. So. So we're trying to fix it now.
I'm gonna expand it just a little bit more, because you guys may remember I did touch, uh, reach out to Corey Borgan. Who's the turf management uh instructor at Southeast Tech. I got a response from him today, um. And I basically showed him three basic questions, so yeah, you can probably figure out by the answer to the questions what what his response was. This is more post-infrastructure, keep in mind. But I think it's important because of what we've been told, that the the grass is too bouncy, too lumpy, it's not, you know. It's not sufficient as far as the soccer field goes. Uh, in the apparently the Sioux Falls region or our region. Uh. He started by saying he couldn't attend night, but he would like to attend at any point in time, and the answers to your questions are as follows. I would gladly share my ex, our expertise at Southeast Tech and turf management to uh uh help consult on this project. Answer question number one. Uh, Southeast Tech does not have um large sports seeding projects, okay, because I know when we spoke. You talked about that one, who who planted the seed and and the erosion control uh before. And that was my final question, we do look at different methods of erosion control during uh established new grass growth. So uh, so we do have a partner a little bit down the road, um, there was no figures, uh, he could not give me any figures, I don't think there really would be any. I mean, they're there right now, uh, doing some 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 kind of hands-on management, so. What I'm trying to say to you guys is is that that uh it it's it's my intent, uh, hopefully, or our intent, hopefully. That that, you know, it will not be a five to seven year project to get that grass mature enough so everyone is happy. Um, we're 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 reaching out to to try and uh get this as efficient and as usable for you as possible. Uh, and I had firsthand seen what part of that, the the fields you guys use. Uh, as far as uh, namely the north end, what I've seen so far, am I correct by by saying that? Um, I mean, it it because it seems like most of the practices that take place out there are kind of the north end, am I, am I wrong? Or where is is there, I know there's some kind of Mendoza line there out in those fields where you you don't practice as much.
Well, we have a variety of, you know, based on the age group, so the further south. Those fields are are younger age groups, those are the smaller fields. Um, and then the further north you go, those are the the larger fields for the older age groups.
Okay, gotcha. Um. I'm I'm gonna go on the, are we, are we good here, guys?
We got one comment to make.
Okay.
For the folks following along on YouTube and Facebook. We do have three concerned citizens here, one of them is a sports complex committee member, we have the chairman of the sports complex committee here this evening. And he has since left. So from a council standpoint, it it seems that the committee is broken, in my opinion. So I'm encouraged to those concerned citizens to take their energies and direct them into the committee as much as. Um, they can as well as other public forums, so I'll just make that point.
I agree, that's a good point, Mark. Travis. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to um, correct me on the verbiage, to collect the information needed uh for final figures to proceed.
So fast.
I can repeat it, I got it written down.
Oh, okay, okay, so Nelson moves to collect the information.
Collect the, uh, collect the information for the final figures to proceed with, gentlemen, this is up to your discretion here, I want to make sure you're listening closely. Uh, for grading and seeding. What else do you want in that? I mean, I I want your input on this.
Uh. Don't think they can give and put under your emotion.
No, I I do, but I mean, okay, grading, seeding, electric. And. Uh. Electric, water and septic. Grading, seeding, it's kind of one.
Grading, seeding, electric, water and septic.
Yes.
Got it. Um, so moves to collect the information for the final figures to proceed with um the grading, seeding, electric, water and septic. Is that my?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay?
Perfect.
I'll take that for a second discussion.
For discussion.
Should we be clarifying that?
I, here's. Kind of wondering, I think we've got, we've got some preliminary numbers here, and I wonder if a better way to proceed wouldn't be to. Decide on a dollar amount, so everyone set aside. X dollar amount. And begin. Set either free to to finance what she needs to do to get that done, so that we can start this plan and have it ready to bid for next year. Go ahead.
For the sake of simplicity. I'm gonna make a substitute motion.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I was just, in back of my mind, instead of putting this money aside right now, we've got plenty of time to get this figured out. Don't we need to figure out what's gonna be fields and what might be. Developable land for.
That was in my motion.
Yeah, I know, I mean, how do you get a figure for electric if you don't even know where you're gonna put a building to run it to?
I get those kinds of numbers every day.
The grading.
You find all those numbers.
The grading's gonna be different, like a proportion of it, so.
Okay, I'll make my motion and see whether satisfied anybody. I move to have Stockwell engineers. Design. Proposed project to include twenty acres of light industrial, forty acres of sports complex. And that, I want a hard number. That includes grading and seeding.
Um, and forty acres of sports complex, okay, sorry.
And give her your grading and seeding to get that.
To include grading and seeding, hard number on grading and seeding.
Thank you.
That's it.
We've got a number on water and electric.
That's a substitute motion.
I'll second that because we're short of acres.
Second from heel. I I I think, I think the wa, I think all the other stuff comes after. You get to the first part figured out. You you build the first part and then you put, then you put the ice on. Because short, short of the twenty acres and the forty acres and the grading and seeding, because. There's gonna be, there's gonna be a ditch and there's gonna be a holding pond. Short of that. You get that nailed down and you do your finding, and I'm not opposed to making a motion to commit monies to it. But I think you get that nailed down and then you come back with the electric. And the water and the tank.
When do you come back to do that?
After we give the numbers from Mitch.
Yeah, I think. I think what I would suggest is we have this meeting with the the sports complex group, because there's still some unknown, we need to probably discuss. The grading and seeding makes perfect sense to me, I think that that would be a good project out there, and my question is, are we gonna extend gravel out there to try to get. You know, another parking lot on the other end of that, if we're gonna have a field over there. Okay, those are probably some unknowns to me at this point. Um, and through those discussions with that group, I think some of those things will come forward, so.
But you still gotta grade it.
Yep.
And if we save money on seeding, because we don't need to seed it, we're gonna put gravel in, then it's a mute point.
Well, if you're asking me to estimate the cost of that project, I need to know whether we're gonna do some of those.
I think we can do gravel and seed on the fly, and I feel confident we can do that on the fly. I mean, I think we can.
Yeah.
But you're looking for a layout.
And you just want estimates, is what I'm getting at is at this point.
I want a hard number. I want you to come back with a plan and say it's gonna cost this much.
Yeah.
Well, you, you're just looking for a layout too, and then also you say.
Okay.
I want you, I want you to come back with a layout. And I would assume that's gonna be after you meet with that group.
Yep.
And that layout's gonna show twenty acres of light industrial, forty acres of sports complex. And a hard number on grading and a hard number on seeding. And then if you happen to say, I don't think we should seed here, I think we should put gravel in here for a parking lot, I think we can do that on the fly.
Okay.
That's what I think.
I guess I'm gonna be, oof, man, I'm gonna be disappointed if. That place doesn't get irrigated. And we don't get concession stands in there, we don't break bathrooms in there, I guess, I'm. I'm taking. I'm kind of siding with Matt and Nick now, I mean, I. I want to make sure that the wheels are in motion to to get this thing going too, you know?
But no, I.
Rug pulled out.
And and I, and I agree, Ryan, but but the problem you run into.
I agree.
Is everybody's got an opinion on a concession stand.
I I.
Everybody's got an opinion on a storage building, everybody's got an opinion on a parking lot.
I agree with that.
Everybody's got an opinion on a septic tank and a concession stand and an, and an ice cream machine.
You can't do it all.
Everybody's got an opinion and they, and they come up with with a motion that covers all that, and they're happy and we're happy, we'll be here all night.
I agree, I I agree with that.
Can I come up too?
Absolutely, I'm hoping you will.
Okay, so I'm sorry, Jessica Evans, thank you. Um. So a couple of things, number one, the only reason I think there are three representatives here tonight is because, number one, I happened to talk to Mark today. And Mark said that you were talking budget tonight. News to me because Matt had told me that we were talking budget on November, or on December fifth meeting. So this was not on our radar, so number one, did you reach out to the sports complex committee and say, hey, we're gonna talk budget tonight? Please come and attend. This goes back to a a point that I have made before is communication. You didn't communicate it to the sports complex committee that it was happening tonight.
Can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
The comment I made on that Facebook page said we were going to be talking about it tonight.
Okay, I I'm sorry, if you made that on that, I'm not following that that page because I. There's, there's some differences in opinion on how. How we get to the end result of getting these fields, this complex finished. I love the idea that we focus on finishing it with or without the twenty acres. I understand that you have your land development, the business development to do. I hundred percent support that, and I have been, I've said that time and again. And but what I think is really happening is that you've got a community that wants reassurance that we're gonna be able to finish this project. And that I think the whole save the twenty acres came out of a fear of you're gonna take that, not finish it, not replace the, not replace the fields. And then, um, and then you're gonna go out on your way, and then we're gonna eventually someday be without the fields. So anyways, that aside, um, I, if you put it out there on the Facebook page. We didn't see it, we didn't see it, I happened to talk to Mark today, he said you were talking about it, so I'm super glad that we were, that we got it and we found out. However. I do wish going forward, I have not been a part of the committee, but I now feel like I care enough to be a part of the committee. Is that there's solid communication between the council and the committee, somebody's gonna be responsible with letting the committee know if you're gonna talk budget. Or if it's gonna come up in the meeting, and I don't know why that didn't happen for tonight, because I would certainly think that that would be something that you would, you would do, but it didn't happen. Then, um. With the planning, I kind of feel like without meeting with the committee, you had the preliminary meeting with Stockwell. How many weeks ago, that was a very initial meeting, you're trying to get a hard number, which I think is wonderful, because. It would reassure people that, yep, it's gonna happen, we're gonna move forward, however, we don't know what it's gonna look like. So you can't get a hard number until you've decided what it's gonna look like, so. Can we kind of sort the this, these steps out and say that we are going to design it? And commit to it, get the hard numbers and then commit to the money. And then we'll start working on it instead of trying to commit to money. On a design that's halfway there.
I'm not really sure how many different ways there are just to flatten it out and seed it.
There's been discussion on how many fields are, how many baseball fields and softball fields are even gonna go out there, because what is there?
Baseball fields and soccer fields to me is irrelevant. I want to get it knocked down and seeded. The layout, the layout's not part of that. I literally mean knock it down. Take the high spots, flatten out the low spots, make it flat and plant grass. The baseball fields, the layout, the soccer fields.
You.
That's irrelevant to me. Completely irrelevant.
Okay, and then you were talking about the gravel too, because there's been talk about where the parking is gonna go, so it seems it.
But that's why I told Mitch, because this committee. That Travis and the mayor and Arden and the committee and Stockwells are gonna sit down and go over that layout. And that, there again, that's like I told Mitch, the difference between seed, grass seed and gravel. And that, there again, that's like I told Mitch, the difference between seed, grass seed and gravel is irrelevant to me. All, all these points, they're valid. But until you get that entire site flattened out and get it seeded, you're, you're just talking. You're just talking. And that, and that's why I say when you, when you get off in the weeds about, is this gonna be a softball field? Is this gonna be a baseball field? Is a big soccer field gonna go here? Is it gonna be two little soccer fields? You're getting way out in the weeds and everybody's got an opinion and, and it just bogs the whole thing down.
Right.
That's why I just want a hard number to knock it down, seed it, get the grass growing. And in my mind, if, if you want baseball fields, fine, if you want soccer fields, fine. If you want the concession stand there, fine. I, I don't care, that, that's all, that's all. It's all fancy stuff to me. We can't get to that stage. Yeah, you can't get to that stage until you get it knocked down and get the drainage figured out, the holding pond in, in the, the shed off water flow. That, that's, it doesn't matter what you think you're gonna have, there's only probably one way to flatten it out. There's not multiple ways to flatten it out and seed it, there's one way to flatten it out and seed it and then you, you. Put your stuff in accordingly.
Okay, so with that, you would, what you're thinking is that you're gonna approve the money for that first? And then we'll come back through with the, the bigger chunk of it and you'll approve that December, January-ish.
Yeah, Stockwell can get those numbers back, but Stockwell, I mean, can you get those back that quickly?
We sure can, I mean, I think, I think we're gonna. Complete both of these tasks in the next two weeks and we're gonna have this meeting and our goal will be to come away from that meeting with. You know, with a plan of what that, how that could be used in that area, but. I think what Mark's trying to say is whether you do a baseball field or a soccer field in there is, you're basically flattening the area. I think the goal of the, of our meeting is to get the whole area flattened out and so that soccer can play anywhere in there. And the fields can be arranged however they need to be. Our goal at the next meeting will be to try to get a layout that the group can, can agree to.
Then the committee will come together.
Yep, and then, and then after that meeting, we'll do our estimates and come back to the next meeting with hopefully a layout that everybody's. Happy to present and costs associated with it.
See, I, and maybe I'm not explaining this good to you, but in my mind. If, if we're building the house, I wanna talk about building basement. And I wanna know how, how many square foot that basement is. I don't wanna talk about the kitchen cabinets, I don't wanna talk about any of that stuff upstairs, I'm looking at the foundation, period. Let's build the foundation, let's get it flat, let's get the grass growing and everybody else can. Cause honestly, the, the baseball field, the soccer field, it's all. That's all, that's all down the road. So.
And, and honestly.
When you say down the road, you're not saying forever down the road, what you're saying is let that committee come up with those details.
Yeah, but, but honestly.
That's the next step.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if you know what a baseball field costs to build?
Well, we've heard the numbers.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars worth of chain link fence, twenty thousand dollars worth of agri line, I mean, those numbers just. So, I mean, we can talk about baseball fields. Yeah, and, but I, I mean, that, that dollar sign just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger. But right now I know there's an appetite to spend a half million dollars just to flatten it out, to plant the grass. To get twenty acres of light industrial, forty acres of sports complex. We'll turn the twenty acres over to Jesse and tell him to run, we'll turn the forty acres over to you guys and the committee and Stockwells and say, come up with a plan. And then, and then let's move forward from that.
Jessica, I, I wanna go back to something Mark said right at the beginning. This three hundred and fifty, five hundred thousand dollar can has been kicked down the road for seven years. This discussion, flatten it out, get to this point, should have probably taken place five or six years ago, it did not. Right now, I think we've probably got the best opportunity because we've got a council that is probably willing to say, let's spend that money. And I don't know that we've had that.
I can tell you from right now, from sitting in this chair for.
You haven't had that.
We haven't had that, no.
So I know there's been a lot of, there's, you know, I hate that word, that there's not trust or you wanna see what we're doing. But I think we have a better opportunity right now to get this thing moving off to the next step than you've ever had since that's been started. So I would give you that as a reassurance from me, I think we're at a better spot than we've been for a long time.
Jessica, I would also reach out to you and of course Nick and Matt too. Um, and expand a little bit off of what Travis has said, that, 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 um, you know, we need your, your. Your input, we need your, your, I don't wanna say guidance per se, but, but I mean, your enthusiasm to bring to that podium. Uh, because it's hard for us and, and, and any other citizens in, in this community that, you know, unless there's a, a driving force behind it. Um, we've seen it once and it's happened right now, Travis just alluded to it. Sports complex, whether they admit it or not, is a little bit flat, they need you very badly. And, and what you're bringing to the, the podium is wonderful, I'm, this is, this is the most excited I've been about sports complex in four years. Okay, and, and so, uh, so, um, you know, and with most areas is, is, uh. I'm spot on with him, even though he amended my motion, that's fine. So, so, but I, what I'm, before I, before I cast my vote, I'm, I'm, I wanna make sure you guys understand that, 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 uh. Um, squeaky wheel gets the grease and right now the wheels are, are a little bit rusty and need some grease.
I would like to address the communication portion of your comment. It's on the agenda. Every, every person on the sports complex committee, chairman on down, has my number. And we have talked at various times throughout the last few weeks about various things. And I've said, this is on our radar, we're talking about this, you got a council that supports us. So, the communication, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna hold someone's hand, bring them down here, we are all adults. So we're looking for people who genuinely wanna be involved. And so, uh. Well, that's it, we are all adults and if they wanted to be here, they would be here.
We are.
Um, I guess I just wanted to say that, uh.
How, how do you spell your last name?
Oh, B R N S, sorry.
Of course, thank you.
Easier than, uh, you think.
I'd, I'd put an E in there, but yeah, you're good, thanks.
I know we, what you're saying Travis, that, uh, sure, the sports complex needs a face, representatives, whatever. But what are you that the sports complex needs all of you more than it needs? I mean, maybe it's tough for that committee to, I don't know, keep that same head of steam going that. You know, they had in the beginning, uh, things stopped happening and I can't believe, everybody's just as busy as you guys are and as we are. Um, it just seems like what the sports complex needs is for you guys to make sure that you're doing the right thing. To meet their needs, whether or not they're being a squeaky wheel or not. Because I just feel like you guys need to do what's right for all the people that are using the sports complex. Um, and for me, it seems like the most noticeable thing is all the soccer that's happening up there right now. I mean, obviously I, I've seen quite a bit of softball things happening up there too, but. Um, that's, and that's the concern, it's like, for me anyway, I guess I can't speak for everybody, but. We see all those people using that sports complex for soccer, um, and the risk of displacement for all those people, for all those kids. Is concerning to me, so that's where I'm saying, like, the people, the kids that are using that, we, you guys, they don't need. I mean, sure, maybe a squeaky wheel would help, I guess, you know, but, uh, ultimately, I mean. You guys are the ones that are going to either kinda, I guess, make or break for them, so, um, it's that reassurance they need that. They're not gonna be displaced, love the idea of getting the rest of what's up there, um, graded, seeded. And at least getting the ball rolling, you know, as far as, uh, getting some new space potentially to be used, but, uh. Um, anyway, just kinda wanted to make up, I guess.
I'm gonna follow that up with, um, here's the last information we've gotten from the sports complex committee. The last minutes we have from them is from, are from February twenty sixth of this year. It mentions that they will elect officials at, uh, that meeting, at the next meeting. Uh, let's see, this is coming from Audra, it says, I do know from a string of emails that the next meeting they had was to be on March twenty seventh, twenty seventeen. But I, Audra, the council, the city does not have any of those minutes and we do not have any communication from the committee since then. So, we, uh, we like to put our money where the squeaky wheel is or where. We feel that the best, uh, investment for the future of Hartford is, it would be our children, our road, or twenty acres of development. So we can't give the sports complex committee a, a pass.
Yeah, and that's okay, I'm just saying, let's not take a step backwards. Okay?
I agree, I agree, but, you know, there's a lot of public record and I just wanna make sure it's on public record that. That we are trying to be proactive in this and we are moving this ball forward and we are doing it with a broken committee. So, I would encourage those folks to reevaluate their position on the committee, its involvement with the city. And how we can, what their next step, what's their next course of action?
I think the best course of action is exactly what Jeremy's putting together and basically a focus group for. Being able to move that forward rather than, uh, counting on the volunteers that are just doing it, I mean.
We certainly are.
It'd be great, you know, if that's the way that it worked, that the group of volunteers would keep on keeping the ball rolling forward, but. I don't, I can't tell you why it's not happening, I can tell you, I don't go to those meetings, I still care about, you know, sports complex. I still care about economic development, I was one of the people that was, you know, I guess, excited about the growing Hartford. You know, movement you might wanna call it, you know, a few years ago, you know, so for me, it's not. You know, me being on the development side of the fence or the sports complex side of, side of the fence, it's like, thinking like. I just want planning that's gonna work for everybody and taking a step backwards for all those people that use soccer fields is, in my opinion, a bad plan.
Do you feel, do you think that this is, um, the motion that's on the table, that gets approved? Do you feel like that's a good step forward?
Um, I guess, it is, and, and I think it's actually exactly the way that things should be done, is, I mean, the first thing you should do. Is have a plan to act on it, um, the, the, the way to me that things got a little bit muddy is that. That should've been done, I think, before, uh, we rezone twenty acres, but I mean, obviously that ship has sailed and it is what it is, so I mean. Now it's move forward with the best approach possible, so for the people that are worried about the sports complex and being displaced, they want reassurance. You know, for me, that's what I would want, I guess, is reassurance that we're not gonna take a step backwards with our soccer fields specifically. Uh, because that's the twenty acres that are, uh, rezoned right now as soccer fields, so that'd be my concern, I guess, so I mean. Yeah, for me, it, it seems like that's the right direction to move is, um, absolutely, the next thing needs to happen is the grading and seeding for the rest of that. So it can keep on moving forward and planning for the other things that we were talking about, you know, whether there's gonna be fields in certain places. And parking lots in certain places and that's exactly what that committee's going to be working on, that, uh, you've assembled, like. I love the direction that's going and the idea of getting the, uh, the grading and seeding done for the rest of it.
I think the other thing that that committee will work on is, is basically drawing that line and saying, I'd say, alright, let's find out a way to keep. What's, whatever plan is decided upon, sports complex.
Well, and, and I get what you're saying about planning, but, you know, from my standpoint and why I voted the way I have was, to me, step one was rezoning. You know, like, to me, that was the most important thing to get done. We didn't send dozers out there the next day, you know, but I felt if, if the situation was. Unzoned and a company came in with, wanna put a hundred and fifty employees here. Then I'd be faced to kick the soccer kids to the curb or the business to the curb. You know, somebody's gonna lose. And all of us would have to answer to a lot of people why we told the business of a hundred and fifty people not to come to town. You know, and if they're coming into town with a hundred and fifty, then step two would have been, where do we put the soccer fields?
Right, and the best thing to plan on three years ago, obviously that's usually the way it works, you know, that, uh. I guess you realize too late that, well, we should've been planning on this before, but that's the way that it goes sometimes, but.
So for me, I feel like we got past that step one, in my opinion. Now we're to step two, which is grading and seeding before the company even comes to town. That could be soccer field through fifteen years for all we know.
I can understand the thought process, I mean, to me, it's still, the other way around makes more sense, but, you know.
You, you gotta remember, we're, we're here because, uh, of an economic development movement, not a sports complex movement. So we, we're, we're trying to, you know, walk that fine line.
Yeah, but.
See what I'm saying?
You're still representing everybody in your ward.
And, and, uh, no one in my ward has reached out to me about sports complex committee, we'll say that on record, no one in my ward.
Then I guess it's up to you to do what you feel like is the right thing, so.
That's why we're here.
I, I, I have one question. Is your mind put to ease tonight or not?
Um, I like the direction it's going, there's no guarantee anything's gonna happen. I don't know.
But, but it's like, it's like, it's like I told you though, Nick, we, we had a plan. And that got blown up, then there was plan B, that one got blown up, now we're on plan three. And granted, that one can get blown up too, at any time. Anytime these plans can get blown up because ultimately, they're, they're just a plan. Regardless of who writes the letter, whether it's the Swensons or me, regardless of who stands at that podium. It's just a plan, that's all it is, you can't, I mean, you, you can do your best to put a plan on a foundation where it can be destroyed. But ultimately, four people sitting behind this desk can do what they do. And it can be referred and then the people can do what they do, I mean, we've seen that happen before too. But ultimately, it's just a plan, and the plan is right now is to get a hard number to flatten out that land, seed it. Have the committee get together and figure out what that other forty acres looks like and move forward with that plan. But the plan I wanna leave with tonight is at a minimum. To have, turn Stockwell's loose on getting us a hard number to knock that thing down and seed it. So, in the future, if we need to shift the soccer fields, we have a lot more options to shift them. Okay, that is the best support it's had in, in years, I can.
So, I, I get the underlying feeling that that just makes it more desirable for a business to move in. I understand the concern of the, of the folks who are passionate about the sports complex and that is. They wanna see what color they can walls, to go back to your House reference, well, we'll get there.
No, and, and I get that and, and I don't, I talk to so many people about this. And honestly, I'm not sure where the mistrust came from, I really don't. But. I don't think it's well deserved yet, not, not from this council, I think, I think that mistrust is misplaced with this council. So, I mean, people can say what they want about me, but I was sitting here and I voted on buying that land. I was sitting here and I voted to bring that agri line in from Shockley. I was sitting here and I voted to put up that chain link fence. I was sitting here and I voted to knock down and see what we do have. I was sitting here and voted to have it reseeded when the initial seeding did not come in. So people can say what they want about me, but I have a record of supporting every single thing that has happened up there to date. Should, could I, should I have done more? Maybe. I certainly could've done less, the soccer fields, those kids are enjoying right now, at a minimum, come courtesy of me and Scott Nelson. At a minimum. And where the mistrust comes in.
Getting it done.
Is beyond me. Because I know what money we put into that site and, and I don't know why anybody would think. That I'm just gonna jump on board, sell them that land to bring in a business if it's the wrong business and displacing. sell them that land to bring in a business if it's the wrong business and displacing anybody. Because it's, to me, this city has enough land with enough grass on it. We can, we can put soccer fields a lot of places. They might be in different places, and you might have to go from knee to knee, but I think you can play soccer in town. But what gets me is people just automatically think that I would just set fire to the money we've already invested in that facility. Because the soccer fields you guys enjoy, I would say we have over half a million dollars in them.
Over here.
And it, and I, like, no means I'm in a position to say, you know what? Let's just hand over twenty acres to Jesse and just forget about that half million dollars. I'm not that guy. And and how, how the mistrust started, I don't know. And it doesn't matter. All I wanna do is come out of the night with a plan to finish the rest of the cycle. With twenty acres of light industrial and forty acres of sports complex. And I don't mean to be flip when I, when I say, I don't care where the baseball fields go, I don't care where the soccer fields go, I don't care where the concession stand go. I don't mean to be flipped by that. But I mean, honestly, that, that's the small, that's the small stuff. I don't care if they're softball fields or baseball fields. I don't care, 'cause that's, that's for somebody that utilizes, figured that out, so.
One other thing I just wanna quick say is too, if, if RFI comes in and it's, it is a business that looks attractive and it's before we're able to get other soccer fields done up there and all that gas and everything going, that still takes council action. It's not just, not a done deal, you know? It would still take council action. So we'd be having all this discussion again. Say, okay, are we ready or are we not? You know, and so, there's, it's not, it's not like saying that land's gone. I mean, it, it's still there, you know, it'd still take the decision of this council to set up, transfer.
Well, I have a lot of confidence in all of you. I know pretty much all of you personally, I guess. And I think that ultimately, things are gonna happen, right? I don't like to take steps backwards and like to look at moving forward and end goal and gain where we need to be. I mean, obviously, one of, um, I don't know, one of my concerns was, or I guess just fairly recently, is it felt like we had a chance to do things in what, in my mind, is the right order. And, um, basically not rezone that twenty acres and do that twenty acres, plan that at the same time we're planning with that committee, the, uh, reconfiguration of sports complex, and move forward on both things at the same time. I mean, obviously, it's, and and that's maybe okay, that we're going, doing things at different times. In my mind, it's a little bit backwards, but I guess I have confidence that you guys are gonna be forward, um, in the right direction. Well, as far as I'm concerned, what the right direction is, I guess, so.
Okay, thanks. Alright, we got a motion. We got a substitute motion. Second, do we need to hear the substitute motion again?
We better.
Okay, so Monahan makes a substitute motion to have Stockwell engineers design, um, a proposed project to include twenty acres of light industrial and forty acres of sports complex to include hard numbers on grading and seating. Keel, second.
Well, that can cost us, Mitch.
John had donated all that engineering.
First, first it was three hundred thousand, there was four hundred thousand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, we'll do an estimate that'll probably take, you know, I'll probably have an engineer work on it for five, six hours, I would guess. I mean, there's probably an afternoon that they'd have to research some task bids and that sort of stuff.
Less than a thousand, though.
Yeah.
Alright, any more discussion? Call vote. On the end?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
Burnham?
Yep.
Keel?
Yes.
Horn?
Yep.
And Nelson?
Yeah.
Also, while we're still on this agenda item, I would like to appoint Councilman Keel and Councilman Jones to Swenson Land Edition Proposal Team. And to get special meeting pay for meetings attended, retroactive to the last meeting they have already attended. I can't make a motion. I can just make an appointment and rely on the rest of the council to make that motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you need for that, Audra?
Uh, yes, when was your last meeting, just so that I know?
Just do your appointment.
She's, she's got it. Um, yeah, so as long as I am informed of when those special meetings happen, then I'll get those, so I can make sure those aren't.
That motion, that motion's to approve the appointment and the retroactive pay.
Yes.
You want me to separate it out or?
No, that's fine.
Alright, discussion? Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yeah.
Keel?
Stady.
Burnham?
Yes.
Jones?
From Stady.
My.
Yeah.
I love doing what I need to watch. Should've went the other way.
Play a little poker.
And there is another meeting next week, on twenty ninth, three thirty, for softball. So, when you go over, they've got some, some ideas put together that we can review.
And the grading and the representative, I mean, yes.
Yes, so on that committee is, it's us, it's also Lyle Howie from the H A D C, Jesse is there, Teresa is there. Craig, were you there? I'm trying to remember if you were there. No.
I got invited, Mitch was there.
Nobody in flight.
Nobody in flight.
Take your blanket.
What about the committee?
No, no, hold on. Matt is, Matt's there from the committee, Dave Varane is there from the committee, and, uh, Nick is there as a representative. Yeah, so, I think he's pretty well represented across the board. Alright. Peter's doing updates. I don't have all the notes in front of me. That covers that piece of it. Anything else under sports complex?
I, I'd just like to tell Matt and the two other concerned citizens that, uh, there, there will be discussion in the future. I don't know how it'll play out, but there will be discussion when we get this hammered out about, uh, a lease of forty acres to a sports complex. I don't know what that looks like. There's, there's a lot of unanswered questions with that. Uh, I think the biggest, the biggest question that I think in my mind that needs to be answered is that if we lease it to a nonprofit, whether we take the city out of the running for any grants. Because if we take ourselves out of the running for any federal or state grants, then that probably won't happen. In the event we can lease it and still qualify for grants, then I think that's gonna be a fairly serious conversation. And I don't know what that lease looks like. Five year, one year, year to year, you know, and maybe day out on either one of the parties. Maybe that's a conversation we're gonna have. We're not gonna solve that tonight. We probably won't solve that in the next month or two. But I wanna have that discussion.
So, I would encourage this group to, uh, think about what a, uh, full-time employee for the city would look like, how that would interact, uh, and how they could facilitate, uh, things out of the sports complex. And, uh, we'll be, uh, we'll come to you in the future for your recommendations and suggestions on that.
Alright, anything else?
Thank you, guys.
Mickelson Road Project, Rural Development Fund.
Well, kinda previously gave you a little bit of an update of where we're sitting as far as with the stump being the asset agreement. Like I said, Rose will sign the agreement when we take, you know, the delayed assessment verbiage out of it. Um, she's fully aware, knows that we're gonna still assess her on the backside through the county. She just doesn't wanna sign her name to an agreement that has it in there. So Larry's redoing that agreement. I hope to have that by our next meeting, 'cause she's, so she did sign everything else then, so. And Asa's, basically, um, I think we indicated to you last time, some verbiage needs to be changed with this letter of credit. Um, which Larry has talked to Sam, gone over that. They are gonna actually meet tomorrow and hammer out what that, what each document, you know, what needs to be changed in that document. So hopefully, that will all be completed by our next meeting as well. So hopefully, we can move forward with approving the second phase and keep going on this. Um, so that's.
Here, you wanted to apply for the loans and?
Yeah.
So I'm gonna get sidetracked here then.